The meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, Monday, December 2nd, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the bud of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of meeting agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
I have motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Rozio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Approval of minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting on 11/12/2024.
I have motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Rozio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Public announcements. All right, public comments. Going once. All right, moving on. Item number seven, the consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board. It will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the public so requests, app, or prior to the meeting, in which the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call vote of those present and voting.
Uh, the orders and bills. Previously paid was three hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and one cents added to, uh, the bills for this month of four sixty-nine, one twenty-fourty-seven, with a total to be approved tonight of seven ninety-one, I'm sorry, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the orders and bills in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second that. I have motion by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by Trustee Moreno. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, moving on. New business, item A, Township Logo Proposal. Mr. Grebel?
Good evening, Board. This evening in front of you in your packets, you have a request from the Supervisor's Office requesting the approval and adoption of a new township seal and the seals of the sequential township departments. On the second page, you'll find the initial Lennox Township logo. Each department has the separate logos identifying the individuality for each one. This is a new logo for the township, which would be involved in identifying our vehicles and also our letterhead and official notifications within the township. That goes outside of the public, into the public area also. Many communities within the areas have been updating over the last couple of years, and at this point in time, our recommendation is to move forward with an updated logo for the township. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions or comments. Do you have approximately the cost to do this?
Uh, the cost?
I'm sorry. The approximate cost for updating the vehicles would be somewhere probably in the low seven hundreds, if that.
What about ninety-six dollars for the decals?
Hundred ninety-six?
No, ninety-six dollars.
I'm sorry, ninety-six. So, looking at the high end of that across the board for paper and so on, then we are well below. Now with today's digitizing and capabilities, the cost would be extremely minimal.
Are we gonna be tossing out old documents that had this?
No, that would be, the main part is the record.
So what you're gonna do is you're gonna phase, phase out and then phase in?
Correct.
Okay, so this will take a period of time?
Correct.
Stationery and whatnot will not be?
We're already out of the old letterhead. So that is already, so we can easily transition into that real quick. So it's old stationery, that's already been used.
Okay. Letters and whatnot that will have the logo on it and whatnot?
Correct.
That would all be used up before?
So anything?
I would hate to see things thrown away, wasting our money for?
Right. I understand. But anything before this remains on the old letterhead.
Okay.
So the old logo, so nothing's being changed over before this date.
Got, gotcha.
What does it look like? What are you doing? You tried last year. And I hated it.
I'll bring it to you.
If there's no further discussion from the Board?
It doesn't look like what it's township to me. It was on the farming stuff. Dear honey. Did we get to vote on this, the people? The township people?
Sorry, at this point in time, public comments has a separate timeframe before and after the meeting, not on the individuals.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve the new township seal and the subsequent seals for the individual departments. I'll second that. I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Trustee Rozio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Moreno?
No.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Nay.
All right, motion passes by a three-two vote. Moving on to item B, Business License Fee Schedule. Mr. Grebel?
Good evening, Board. This evening you have in your packet a final wrap-up for items that had been motioned and approved by the Board early in the year concerning the business license. This evening, you have in front of you the actual application form and also the draft ordinance at this point in time. On the second page, on the back of the documents that you have, you'll also see the Township Fee Schedule that updates the business license, which is a twenty-five dollar annual fee. So a business license for two years is fifty dollars. The addition to the fee schedule for updating and clarification for the coming year is also an add for the fire plan review and inspections. Now let me clarify, this has nothing to do with the business of the business license. There was a clerical error where the fire plan review and inspections were not part of the original fee schedule. So that has been added while we're doing this so that it's clear and on all township documents. So now the fee schedule, if somebody comes in and builds a new building, the fire plan and review inspection is on the fee schedule. It's clear and obvious. This way it's very clear, there's no ambiguity to it. Just so it's clear, everyone understands, there is two separate items on this. Now let's go back to the actual business license fee schedule. Once again, that is a twenty-five dollar annual fee, two years at a fifty-dollar rate. Attached to that document is the business license ordinance. And earlier today, we were able to go through and catch a couple of clerical items that we will be correcting and amending, sending back to the Board. Um, one item that I need to clarify under business establishments, any business, and there was a question brought up concerning farms. After clarification, federal right to farm supersedes and overrides any type of licensing. So contrary to what some thoughts were, you know, if they sell items or they're selling off fertilizer, mulch, or whatever the case may be, the business license or the oversight does not cover that. That is not something that we can force onto that requirement. There are some other areas that might be, you know, and we will go into those and clarify that. Under the Section 806.3 definitions, that's where the business question came into play, indirect or any in commercial, indirect on any commercial, industrial, or institutional property within Lennox Township. Once again, the Federal Right Farm Act, federal right to farm supersedes that. Now, if we go through a clarification on license, on page, on the second page at the top, there's a question around license. A written license granted to each business establishment within Lennox Township under this ordinance, for which a fire plan review will be required, in addition to the application administrative review and inspections by the township. Probably approximately ninety percent of our reviews will not require fire plan review. Most of our businesses already have pre-fire plan set, so a fire plan review may not be required. And this was clarification through our public safety, just verifying some questions that were brought forward earlier. Moving on, there is an additional question on page four, under subsection H. During the license period, each person and/or business establishment shall be subject to a fire plan review. Let me clarify that. A fire plan review may have already been done when the business was established. So a fire plan review compared to a pre-plan are two different things. So the fire plan review may already have been completed and will be verified during the application for licensing. Finally, one of the last questions around enforcement, any person had violation. There is a question around the final phrase of that, which says each day a violation of this ordinance continues to exist constitutes a separate violation. That is not necessarily true, dependent upon the issue or the violation. There could be a grace period for that violation to be rectified or corrected, or if there is a egregious violation, then it has to be correct, corrected prior to that business reopening, which could constitute additional violations. But that would be something that is reviewed and corrected by our legal before we move forward with something like that. Finally, on the last page, Chapter 806, Business License Ordinance, supplemental information. A license may be applied for fee paid and granted. A license may be revoked for unresolved violations of the fire code identified during the inspection. The fire inspections are very simple. Basically, if they violate or put off a blockade against an exit, that's a fire code violation. That's an automatic failure. These are not something that the fire department's coming in. They want to educate and get our folks in line for fire safety and safety of the business operations. If there's any additional further questions or comments, feel free to bring them back. If we need to, I'll be more than happy to ask our Public Safety Director, Mr. White, to update and continue with that information for clarification. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions or comments.
Um, I have a question. How is this business license going to benefit the citizens of Lennox Township?
Typically, what this does is this identifies the operations going on within the township for clarification. It also identifies what type of operations we have within the township. When the fire department's doing their review and their plans, it also identifies all of those items coming forward. So there are a number of items on the safety side that would be clarified, clarified, excuse me.
I, I did make a couple of calls to some other townships and did call Ray Township, Richmond Township, and Armaida Township, and neither one of these have a business license. And it was all stated to me that we're here to encourage business and we don't want to discourage them by having a business license. This is what they told me, all three of them. Do I have a comment from the Board on this?
We, uh, previously had business in Chesterfield Township before we moved to Lennox, and they've had one for at least ten years or longer.
I, I am aware of that, that Chesterfield did.
And I believe Harrison Township would also have.
Those are much larger communities than ours, though.
They're still in the neighborhood, but, you know.
These are real close, Ray Township, Richmond and Armaida.
Yes, but Chesterfield, quite literally, these are southern border.
Pardon me?
Chesterfield Township, these are southern border.
Well, Chesterfield's close.
The village of U.A. was a house.
I'm asking how it's gonna benefit.
Mr. Grebel?
Well, number one, public safety. That is first and foremost. If we walk into a building and we don't know what's going on in that building or have no insight, how would you like to be in front of the television cameras and report that back to the news that we killed first responders because we weren't aware? None of us in this building would want to be in the situation that occurred in Clinton Township last year, where you had missiles projecting from various areas that killed innocent bystanders a mile away. Had they had a business license and enforcement issue, they would have been able to go into that building and verify what was being stored in there. Yet today, it is headline news through the McComb Daily, how much the overtime is costing Clinton Township to protect that site. So when it comes to public safety, I think that's an overwhelming response.
Um, didn't Chester, or Clinton Township, didn't you say they had one?
Had one.
Had one?
Yeah.
I believe it was fifty dollars.
For like ten years?
Or a little.
I'm sorry.
Nearly fifty dollars.
I'm, I'm stating that you, you made a comment as to an accident that happened, and you said that this would help prevent that.
That's correct.
Well, it didn't in that community.
Well, that community, the person was in violation in an illegal operation. We can't predict illegal operations, but the Board had directed this to come forward, and a business license is now required within the township. This is the follow-up information and the ordinance itself to go forward effective January 1st. The license is already approved. The ordinance language information is what is being brought forward.
So to clarify what Mr. Grebel just said, this ordinance was passed by previous Board. What is on the table tonight is the fee schedule, which is quite minimal. We are very welcoming the businesses, and fifty dollars for two years is, I would say, quite reasonable. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the business license fee schedule as presented. I'll support it. I have a motion by the Chair, supported by Trustee Rozio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item C, Planning Commission Appointments. Mr. Grebel?
Good evening, Board. This is the time of the year that we typically do our reappointments for several of the departments. This evening, the first one in front of you is a request for nominations of the following individuals to the Lennox Township Planning Commission for the following terms. Michelle Gurley, which will be the Board Liaison. Term commencing immediately, expiring 11/20/28. Jason Walker, as a regular member, continuing with a term expiring 12/31/27. Eric Sutton, as a regular member, with his term continuing and expiring 12/31/2027. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions or comments or entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments as listed to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Rozio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Moreno?
Yes.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item D, Zoning Board of Appeals Appointments. Mr. Grebel?
Good evening, Board. This evening, the Zoning Board of Appeals request from the Supervisor's Office the following individuals with the following terms. Jennifer Sutherland will be the Board Liaison with a term expiring 11/20/28. Chuck Geisler has a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term expiring 12/31/2027. Kathy Honnold has a regular member with a term expiring 12/31/2027. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for a motion to entertain.
I'll make a motion that we approve the three, uh, members to join the Lennox Township Zoning Board of Appeals.
I second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Treasurer Sutherland. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item F. No, sorry, I meant, I meant item E. My, my packet was a little bit mis-arranged here. So moving on to item E, Parks and Recreation Appointments. Mr. Grebel?
All right, this evening, we are requesting the, from the Supervisor's Office, the following individuals to serve on the Lennox Township Border Review.
At Parks and Recreation, I know.
All right, sorry, my packet's upside down. The, uh, following individuals on the Lennox Township Parks and Recreation Committee for the terms expiring 12/31/2027. This evening, the Supervisor's Office is requesting Brian Meissen and Ken Thompson both be appointed to the Lennox Township Parks and Recreation Committee for those terms with that expiration date. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions or comments.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation and approve the following individuals, Brian Meissen and Kenneth Thompson.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by Trustee Rozio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item F, Border Review Appointments. Mr. Grebel?
All right, this is the right document, I'm sorry. This evening, the Supervisor's Office is also requesting the following individuals to serve on the Lennox Township Border Review with terms on all members listed, expiring January 1st, 2027 at noon. Marty Ince is a regular member, Genevieve Rozick is a regular member, Robert Bermanch is a regular member, and Scott Clifford is an alternative member. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the individuals listed for the Lennox Township Border Reviews.
I second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Treasurer Sutherland. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item G, McComb County Purchase of Development Rights Committee Appointment. Mr. Grebel?
All right. This evening, the Supervisor's Office is requesting one final improvement, approve-ment, excuse me. And this is to, for the McComb County, County Purchase of Development Rights Committee with a term to the current, during the time I'm a Board of Trustees. Supervisor Reader hereby nominates Trustee Joe Rozio to serve as the Lennox Township's representative in that appointment. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions, comments, or entertain approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the nomination of Trustee Joe Rozio to the McComb County Purchase of Development Rights Committee.
Second.
All right, I'll, I have a motion by the Chairs, supported by Trustee, sorry, not Trustee Gurley, Clerk Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item H, New Official Michigan Township Association MTA Workshop Request. May the Clerk?
Uh, it's, as new officials, Jenny Sutherland and myself are eager to learn as much as we can about our newly elected positions. The MTA is offering new official training at the cost of a hundred and fifty per attendee to any newly elected officials locally on December 17th in Frankenmuth or January 14th at Port Huron. I'm asking that the Board approve up to six hundred dollars for any new officials on this Board to attend either one of the trainings if they should so choose. I will add that myself and previous Board members did attend this, and it was very educational and helpful to us.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve that the new officials attend the Michigan Township Association Workshop.
I'll second the motion. Do you want to include the cost in that motion?
Add a cost not to exceed six hundred dollars for those who choose to attend.
Do you still support?
Yes.
I have a motion by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by Trustee Rozio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item I, Treasurer's Office Assistant Replacement Request. May the Treasurer?
Um, since I've taken office, my former position and desk are vacant. Lennox Township does have a need for an administrative assistant to the Treasurer's Office. That position is an up-front desk and backs up any receptionist duties as well, and we've reviewed Daniella Solberg's resume and applications included in the packet, and I feel she'd be a great fit. I'm requesting the Board's approval to hire Daniella Solberg on a ninety-day probation. I'm requesting the Board's approval to hire Daniella Solberg on a 90-day probationary basis at $17 per hour.
I'll make a motion to approve the, is it a reposition?
This is my position.
It's your old position?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve Daniella Solberg.
Yep, Daniella.
For a 90-day probationary basis at $17 an hour.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion by Trustee Marino, supported by Trustee Rosio. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Marino?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. All right, moving on to Item J, 2020, sorry, 2025 Meeting Schedule.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting schedules as written.
Second. I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Trustee, sorry, Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Marino. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
All right, Item K, Computer Time Block Purchase Proposal, Madam Clerk?
Is that time of year for the time block sale for our IT department? And I am recommending that we go with the 100-hour time block. They were just in last week to change over some of the new Board members' security levels and stuff, and we were informed at that point that we were basically out of time. So I'm recommending at the price savings that we go with the 100-hour time block, which is at $13,500, which is a savings of $3,500 off their normal labor rates.
This time block, how long does it last? I mean, it's 100 hours, but how long is it?
It's as long as we were keeping the contract with high tech.
Is that like a year's worth?
No.
Seven to nine months.
Seven to nine months.
Seven to nine months, so it's close to.
Generally.
Close to a year.
Okay.
It depends on how much we use high tech for IT services.
How many computer problems and stuff?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 100-hour time block. It seems like the best savings on it, but it only lasts that long.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Marino, seconded by Treasurer Sutherland. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Marino?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Item L, Township Office Building Modification Proposal, Madam Clerk or Madam Treasurer, this one's YouTube.
Mr. Grebel, you can go ahead and handle this.
All right, let me explain this. We have offices within the structure that do not have separate exit doors. This is the way the building was put together. Our elected officials are asking that we look at this and modify this so that their deputies are not involved in foot traffic within their offices if you've been within the area. The Clerk and the Treasurer have closed boxed offices. There are no doors to their actual room. Earlier this afternoon, I was able to take both new trustees through and show them what the transition would be, and that is basically being able to put doors in with windows so that those elected officials can be able to be seen by the public and also be able to exit through those doors coming directly out. Right now, they have to go through the Deputy's Office and through another corridor to get into their office, so it's an enclosed boxed area. What these two have asked for is for us to consider the township putting these doors in and to allow us to go out to bid and bring back the best of three bids on this call. With that, I'll bring it back for any questions or comments and open it up to the Board.
After looking at the situation earlier today, I agree it's a poor layout when the building was built. There should have been a door for both offices at that time for access. But there's nothing we can do about that today other than try to remedy the problem. Correct. So that's my opinion.
So these are just being put up for bid then right now, right?
That is correct.
We're not approving this yet.
No, we have to have bids, we have to get the approval to go out for bid, and then we'll bring the bid, the best of three, we'll bring all three bids back, that's part of the packet, and then the Board will see the best of the three and recommendation based upon history and information that's put together.
I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the Supervisor's Office to seek bids for Township Office Building Modifications.
I'll support that motion. I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by the Chair. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
All right, no further new business. Moving on to public comment.
John Marino, Harrison Township. Got a couple of questions, well, not questions, but just concerns. The business license, how does that affect a special name use or a settlement agreement? So just wanted to bring that to your attention. The other thing is, I didn't even know we had a Parks and Rec Department here. We do? No one's even come over to Scar Fest to hook up something for the residents of Harrison Township with me, so if anybody, if you guys have this guy that does a Parks and Rec, I would be happy to talk to him about doing a, you know, an event at Scar Fest. So anyways, as far as the computer goes, I have, I run my business, and when I run my business, I have an IT person that I've hired to do all my IT work. Would that be better to try to hire a person to actually come in and spend two, three hours a day to work on your computers? I don't know. But just food for thought. The other thing is, is this door, these doors in these offices, did this violate fire codes when you bought, when you built the building, or does it violate fire codes now? So that's, that's a question that I would be asking if the fire codes are, if it's not a violation of the fire code, I don't know. I guess it depends on how much it is. Thank you.
All right, public comment?
Janet Hartway. Apparently, you know that I was upset with the badge, the new logo. You tried this last year, Anthony, you had a thing at the high school, so everybody, you put out there where everybody at the high school could submit a new seal, and only one person did. And I didn't think that seal that was offered, well, that picture was offered, it didn't represent Lenox Township. Now, the seal that you showed me, thank you very much, was three pine trees and a deer across. Is that the same one that you created for yourself? Did you create one for yourself? Is that correct, Superintendent?
I will remind, this is not a Q and A session, this is just a time for public comment.
Okay. So I don't know who created this, I like it, I was against it, and since I feel like this was a blindsided thing, because like I said, it was tried, it was tried before. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment?
This isn't a public comment, I probably should have said it during the announcements, but on the 22nd, we had our community dinner, Lenox and New Haven together, and we served in-person over 250 people, and we had over 100 to-go orders. If anybody didn't get a chance to come, it's every year, the Thursday, the Friday right before Thanksgiving, and I know that they filled a pretty big van with tons of food for the food pantry, like it was, took hour, about an hour to load it all. So it was a very nice event.
Okay, well, I'll consider that call from the Board. Mr. Marino, to answer some of your statements, one, this business license does not affect any operation that has a consent judgment with the township. As for the doors, being against the fire code, I'm unaware. Not a person on this Board was here when they built it, so we don't know that. As for the Recreation Department, this has been two years now, correct me if I'm wrong?
Two years.
Yeah. Machine Phil previously had filled the role of Recreation Director. She is no longer with us as of October, so I hope I answered your questions there. I'd like to get ahold of her so we can. Oh, she's no longer with the Township. Oh, boy, you got a new person now. No, it's still vacant. We're trying to find someone and manage the position. Any further call from the Board?
Yes, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and have a really safe and happy holiday.
All right, Christmas Carol. So before I bring it into German, I would like to, oh, sorry, oh my gosh, it's been a long day. I'd like to welcome our three new members, Treasurer Sutherland, Trustee Rosio, and Trustee Marino to the Board. Look forward to a productive four years, and with that, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:13 PM. I have a motion by the Chair, supported by Trustee Rosio. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, the motion passes. We are adjourned.